Good evening. The City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 11th, 2015 will come to order. Let the record show all commissioners are present and accounted for except for Commissioners Stahl and Stedman who are absent and excused. We have on our agenda this evening a public hearing with regards to the 2015 periodic plan and code update. And what we're going to be doing this evening will be an overall, basically, an integrated review of the entire plan from the element, citywide element standpoint. But before we get to that, are there any non-agenda public comments? Seeing none, we do not have minutes to approve. Is there any other new business besides what I've described in terms of what we have planned for our agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move forward now with a continuation of the public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update in what is this evening our first integrated review. And at this point, we'll turn it over to Gary Hassler.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, Commissioner. Good evening, Commissioners. So you have the whole planning staff, or at least the long-range staff with you tonight.
We're honored.
We're happy to be here.
Yeah.
This is sort of winding down, so we're really happy to be here. I do have a very brief presentation for you. Since we're sort of wrapping this up with the Planning Commission, I thought it'd be a good time just to recap briefly for anybody who might So just briefly to recap how we got where we are now. This is the 2015 periodic plan and code update. So the Washington State Growth Management Act requires periodic updating of local comprehensive plans and development regulations. And as you know, our deadline for adoption of this update was, is June 30th, 2015. So we're getting very close to that date. The purpose of the update is to ensure that local plans and regulations comply with all current requirements of the Growth Management Act. City Council formally initiated the update on February 4th of last year and assigned it to the Planning Commission for hearing, deliberation, and recommendation back to Council. And that's what you guys have been doing for the last year. So the Planning Commission began its review in February of 2014. I think if I recall correctly, literally the week after it was initiated by Council. To date, you've held 35 public hearings. In addition, the Landmark Preservation Board held two hearings of their own, plus one joint meeting with you. And your review has covered the vision statement, all 13 major plan elements, planning area-wide elements, and all 17 sub-area plans. The major themes for the update have been accommodation of allocated population and employment growth targets handed down to us by the state. If you recall, we discovered that we had a residential capacity deficit of 3,554 persons in the Snohomish County portion of the city. And in order to address that, the Planning Commission is recommending the addition of an RAC plan designation for Canyon Park and Country Village. That provides more than that 3,554 capacity shortfall. Another major theme that we talked about for quite some time was the incorporation of the Transfer of Development Rights, or TDR, into the land use element. In response to that, the Planning Commission recommendation includes a new goal, policy, and action in the land use element to keep that process moving forward, as well as further study and consideration as part of the Canyon Park Urban Center Study in 2016-17. So we will revisit that issue in 2016. We had to update the housing element. The background data and housing needs assessment had to be completely revised. And in addition to that, when Council initiated the plan update, they also initiated code amendments for accessory dwelling units. So the Planning Commission also worked on ADU regulations. The transportation element had to be revised fairly significantly to be consistent with changes to the land use element. And the same thing goes for the capital facilities element. And those are probably two of the bigger pieces of the plan, as you've discovered. And then we've updated all of the planning area-wide elements and sub-area plans, as already noted, to reflect changed conditions since the last major update in 2004. And finally, one of the major themes of the update was to simplify the plan overall. And that was in large part to recognize diminished staff resources as well as Planning Commission time for future updates. One of the items that you haven't seen in the packet to date that we wanted to point out tonight, and it's not a substantive change, but the urban design element includes some new figures, per your direction last time you heard this, but which haven't yet been reviewed by the Commission. And those are incorporated into the body of the element's text rather than as 11-by-17 foldouts. We wanted to take a stab at that to see how it worked and to make the, eventually make the entire plan more online-compatible. So some of the figures still need refinement, but as I noted, there are no substantive changes. It's really just reformatting of those figures. As we continue working on the document, we'll continue to make refinements to the graphics and make it more user-friendly, and as I said, more web-compatible. If you have questions about that tonight, we'd be glad to answer them. So from here on out, the remaining Planning Commission schedule, you will wrap up your work this month. So tonight, you're starting your integrated review with the planning area-wide elements. Next Wednesday, the 18th, we anticipate that you'll do an integrated review of the sub-area plans. I think your job next week will be a little more comprehensive than tonight because one of the things that Sherman has been working on over the past several months is looking at the transportation section in each of the sub-area plans to ensure that those are consistent with the transportation element. And since you just wrapped up your transportation element review fairly recently, within the last few weeks, he's still doing that because he didn't know what the final product would look like. So we'll ask you to look at those, and we'll point out the major changes in those, if there are any. We'll do that in the form of the staff report with bulleted items, just as we did tonight for you. We're not going to ask you to wade through every sub-area plan to try and find the changes, so we'll summarize those for you. And then to wrap up, on March 25th, two weeks from now, we'll ask you to review draft findings, conclusions, and your recommendation to Council. And that will complete your review of the 2015 periodic plan and code update. We anticipate that when you're finished at the end of March, you'll probably get a break for a while, because all of our resources will be spent taking this through Council in April, May, and June. And you've already seen how large the document is, so that will take all of our resources. So we'll probably have a break with Planning Commission items. Give you time to recover. And as you know, in the second half of this year, we'll be bringing you the Wayne Golf Course Plan and Code Amendments, as well as the Coast Equity Partners up on Nike Hill. So you'll have those to work on probably beginning in July. Once you have made your recommendation to Council, we have April 21st, May 5th, June 2nd, 16th, and 23rd, if necessary, scheduled for Council review of the plan. And we're hoping that Council will adopt on either June 16th or 23rd. Again, the deadline is June 30th. We'd like to have a couple weeks leeway there so that we can actually collate the entire document to get it sent off to the state for review. So we're hoping that Council will be able to complete their work and adopt, hopefully on the 16th. So tonight, we're asking you to complete this review of the planning area-wide elements, take public testimony, and then provide direction to staff with any revisions or changes you might like to see. And our recommended motion for you at the end of the meeting tonight is to continue the 2015 periodic plan and code update to March 18th, 2015. And with that, we would be glad to field any questions you might have. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Gary. So let's start initially with just any questions from us on Gary's I had one then that I'll ask, and then we'll open it up to see if there's any public testimony that anyone would like to bring forward. So the format that we have in front of us in terms of what we, the packet that we had, had all the line-throughs, it had the planning notes.
Yes.
Are those going to be pushed forward to what the City Council, what will the City Council ultimately see?
Yes, we will send them that marked-up version so that they see the changes that have been made, as well as staff and Planning Commission notes in those note boxes, because that's useful to them, too.
Sure.
And it's not until we have a Council recommendation or a Council decision that we'll clean that up. In fact, we usually even send the state a marked-up copy. We may pull out the note boxes, but we also send them the strike through and underline so that the state can see what changes have been made as well.
Okay. I think the only other thing that I would add is just, it was great to see that summary. We've done a lot of work over the last year. And I personally, I think I speak for all of us up here, really appreciate all the work that Bill, you and your team have done. It's been a lot of work. And these things are never complete, they're never really done, but you definitely can sense if you've moved the ball forward to better reflect reality, as well as Bothell's vision for the future. I believe we've done that. So I just wanted to just say, we're going to provide you with some, a few edits and comments that where we think we could still make improvements, but overall, just really well-done. Thanks a lot. Yeah, Bill?
Staff is very appreciative of all the time the Planning Commission has put in. Every so often, every few years, the city makes tremendous demands on the Planning Commission, where you have to meet many more times than is normal. This is one of those occasions, so we really appreciate your dedication. And I wanted to qualify one thing that Gary said in his opening remarks, and that is with respect to the Wayne Golf Course. Staff may or may not be bringing that back to you this fall, or this summer and fall. Last night, the City Council directed the city manager to attempt to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement with the Richards family on the front line of the Wayne Golf Course, including the clubhouse area.
Okay, great. Thanks for that update. And we're ready to step in there if needed. But if that status changes and the City Council takes steps forward that really don't require the Planning Commission's involvement, that's fine. So thanks for that update on that. I think I'll pause at this point. Are there any comments or questions from any of the public? This is a public hearing, and we want to give you an opportunity to come forward and speak if you'd like. Yes, sir? Please.
So James McNeil. I'm here tonight, want to thank the staff and the Planning Commission for all their hard work on the periodic update, comprehensive plan update, 2015. I've also been doing some review of it myself, reading it. It's pretty intense. But I know it's a lot of work for you guys to go through this and make changes and make sure that we're moving the city right, moving the city forward in the right direction. A couple things that I noticed with our community outreach on the Wayne Golf Course, there's a couple things that have been brought to light on the environmental issues. In working with Friends of North Creek Forest, and the Salmon Wire Eight, and all the different organizations, there's a few things, a few that I have turned into you guys that I'd like you guys to take a look at, pay close attention to, some of the language. I think it's important that we make sure that we're looking at the restoration projects and maintaining the buffers and things like that along the Smamish River. So I'm not going to speak a lot to this tonight, because I know you guys have done a lot of work, but I'd like to just enter it. If you guys could take some time, maybe over the next few weeks or whatever, to review it and see what you guys think about it as well, we'd appreciate that, because I think it does have an impact on North Creek, as well as the Smamish River, and I think we could be good stewards here. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and thank you for all your hard work, and look forward to seeing you soon.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you very much, Mr. McNeil. Really appreciate it. We love to have citizens take a look at any part of this plan and come forward and make public comments on how we might make better improvements. We do our best, but that doesn't mean we might have missed some things that would really be important.
You guys have done a great job. And I can tell you that a lot of the things that I'm reading is just comments that I'm getting from the community. We do have a group now that's growing, and they're reaching out to us and telling us some of the things that are concerning them. So we're just trying to make sure that we shed some light on it for you guys. And if there's things that you guys can do to kind of help things move along in the right direction, that's all we're asking.
Yeah. I just started to look at your two-page document. I see you had a suggestion on NEP 6, and I think the, I'll just take that one as an example.
Mm-hmm.
The city should consider all options when presented to preserve passive and active open space. So you're suggesting we should add the language "all options." Is that what I'm reading there?
Yeah, or not strike the language.
Okay.
So there's a lot of strikes in there, and I think that, you know, I'm not really sure why we would strike it, but, you know, if we can leave it, and it's not going to affect us in any way, but we're moving forward in a positive direction, we should just at least look at it. I don't know why the language in some areas was struck, but, you know, maybe let's just take a look at it and see if we could leave it, or tweak it, or just make sure that we're looking out. That's
Absolutely.
That's pretty much what we're looking for.
So thanks very much. And you have mine and our commitment that we will ask staff, in fact, let's take Mr. McNeil's document, edit it as an exhibit for the record to start with, and then I'd like to have staff review it to begin with. We probably will not be able to review it this evening and incorporate it, but I think before the end of the month, we'll just see if this might be something that we can actually incorporate all or part of this in. And I think you're wise to do this. We certainly believe, we've taken the time, a lot of time on this, because we believe the strategic plan for our city ultimately makes a big difference. It won't change again for another eight years.
Right.
And as code changes, other initiatives come up, I think there's an opportunity for people who are wise, if they refer to this document, it has some authority in terms of saying, this is what the City of Bothell aspires to, and therefore, it can kind of be the basis for changes as we go along over these next eight years. So that's why strategic language matters.
Right. That's why we're reaching out to the community.
Yep.
Letting them know some of these changes, and they're giving us feedback on how we should try to adopt them, so.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much for everything.
Okay. So, yeah, just a second, sir. So just please, Bruce, I see you going to the mic. If you could add this to the record, and I don't know if you'll be able to review this before the end of March, but I would like to have this, you know, be something that we take a look at before we finish and send this on to the City Council. It doesn't look like it's really too extensive. I think this is reasonable for us to be able to do this.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, one of the things I will point out is that a lot of the changes in the natural environment element got done, particularly through the Smamish River, North Creek, because we have a new shoreline element.
Right.
That got, so a lot of these things, I know it looks like it got deleted, but actually just got moved to a different location.
Yeah.
So I think that that's some of the things we can do, actually rather quickly.
Sounds terrific. Great. Sir, did you have a comment?
A brief one.
Yes. State your name, address for the record, and if you could just limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great.
Mike Challenger, 210159000, southeast in the north end of Bothell. Just a few comments on the meeting, a few meetings ago, where we approved the sub-area plan for rezoning on East Riverside. I was, I use East Riverside most days to get to Redmond. It's most convenient for me to do that. And coming back from Redmond, day before yesterday, 4:00 in the afternoon, the traffic lineup for Main Street was, I was stuck back where the Mobile Home Park is, which is just this side of the interstate. And of all the cars in front of me, only one appeared to be a resident. So it seems to me that the impact of the rezoning to create a little more density, I don't think is going to make much difference. Most of the traffic seems to be people using it to get from outside to the other side of downtown Bothell. Now, how that is affected in the transportation element, I'm not sure, but that's a real serious-ish area to deal with. And I'm not sure what the answer is, because you're pretty well constrained at Main Street. Even if you put four lanes on East Riverside, it ain't going to go anywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the only comment I had.
Thank you, Mr. Challenger. I appreciate that anecdotal evidence, if you will. And from our standpoint, we do want to take into account particular homeowners and neighborhoods' concerns with regards to traffic or any other part of any decision that we make. We do need to look at not only, again, as you said, who lives in that area, but who is driving through it, and what is it that's motivated in them, whether it's road construction, another arterial, there's often a lot of factors involved. And so, thank you very much for that anecdotal comment. Seeing no other public comments, we'll go ahead and move forward with our kind of response, I guess, to Gary's presentation and the material that we have in front of us. And I think that what I would like to do is, the material we have in front of us is considerable, but I think we can do it pretty quickly. I'd like to really go through this section by section and just ask each of us here on the Planning Commission if we have any comments or questions of each. And I guess I would just say, I want us to do both. I want us to take the time if we need to, but I want us to keep moving as we need to. So with that guidance, let's just go ahead and get started. We have this packet in front of us. It initially is a descriptive memo. And let me just ask anybody, does anybody have any questions or comments with regards to staff's cover memo? So we're going to, that's what we're going to do, and I don't know if this takes 15 minutes, we'll be done. I don't think it will. Hopefully, it won't take an hour or two, but that's kind of the plan here. So if you guys want to track along with us, we're talking right now about staff's overall summary memo. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, thank you. I just have one question for you, Dave. In your presentation, you mentioned that there were revised or new figures that had been integrated into the document, as opposed to being 11-by-17 attachments on the back. As we go through this, would you point some of those out for us, and maybe we can talk a little bit about those?
Basically, I incorporated all of the urban design figures into the eight-and-a-half-by-11 document here.
Okay, so, okay. So that's all, and it's just that sub-area that that was done for?
Just that element.
Or just that element, I mean. And so is there, is there an idea that going forward, that might happen with some of the other elements as well?
Well, that was part of the reason to do this, is a trial, and if it's something that you like, if you think they're still readable, and these were all, well, one of them was an 11-by-17-formatted map, but it was a fairly simple one that seemed to still reproduce adequately at eight-and-a-half-by-11. The others were graphic illustrations that were done in that 11-by-17 format, because that's how all of the figures were done in the last round. But it seemed that they were, they could also be fit into the eight-and-a-half-by-11 format and just make the whole document a little bit easier, so you're not having to go from the text to a fold-out page and back and forth so much.
I think it's a fantastic idea. That's one of the problems I have in reading documents like this, is having to skip back and turn back and forth when, if you can see the text that you're, you know, that is referring to the figure and the figure at the same time, I think it makes it much more readable. You mentioned previously that, you know, having it online, I think enhances the ability to do that, because you should be able to double-click on a figure. I mean, maybe we can incorporate where you can double-click on a figure and it pops up at a larger size if you need to see it, or you can zoom in on it or something. And I guess another possibility is that even if the, in the written version, if the figures are incorporated into the body of the document, is it possible, then, that we could still have the 11-by-17 figures, maybe in a separate binder or something, just if people want to reference a larger, you know, as they're reading through it, the counter at the city or something, if they want, if they're reading through it, and they came to a figure, they said, I'd like to look at that closer, they can go to another document that has the full-size version, and it, just wondering if that might be a possibility.
I think that's something we can look into, yeah.
Okay. I'm not suggesting that would necessarily happen in the next three weeks, but I'm just thinking as going forward, it might be good to kind of keep our eye on that.
Any other comments or questions on the memo? Commissioner Cabe?
So you've gone over the whole thing? We're not, are we looking at land use right now, or the whole?
No, no. What we're going to do is, we'll look at the memo, then we're going to go to the vision statement, and then we're going to go element by element.
Nothing specific, more element by element.
Okay. Steve, I got one thing.
Commissioner Lee. So I wasn't, I've been on the Planning Commission just a short time, so a lot of this debate happened before I was here, and appreciate everybody's time on all that, all these lengthy discussions. I just wanted to clarify for myself a couple things. So for instance, on page four, the memorandum talks about, it talks about climate change. And so was the determination here, as far as I can tell, that greenhouse cast emissions from humans is part of the cause, or was it, or was it more of just, we're going to try to do things we can locally to cut down on those emissions, or, I know it's a political football sometimes, but I just want to, this is kind of interesting, what's?
Are you, is your
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
About human-generated?
Yes. What was that determination by the Planning Commission? Since we're going to be approving the packet altogether, I guess?
You know, I think the memo actually captured, you know, and again, this is going back into 2014, so it's been a while, but I thought the memo captured, actually made a note of it fairly well, what we were attempting to do, and that is not diminish climate change as an issue, but to try to de-politicize it and to focus it into kind of specific areas that, where we really could make a difference in the city.
Okay.
That was the attempt.
Okay.
So is there something specific on page four with
Well, I was just, I was just wondering what our determination was on it, and whether, you know, were it caused of it or not. It's not, I mean, it's not, it's just a small part of this concept, but I was just wondering what our take was on it. So in the future, I'd be able to refer back to what we determined, so. So I'm going to take away from this that we, you know, we're going to try to do, and I mean, it's such a huge issue, that the things we try to deal with in this packet are things that we can actually make a big difference on locally.
Right.
But so, so, yeah, I was just trying to clarify that, so. And then, I guess on page five, it's just a statement, I would love to see us later in the year, maybe you guys have had some people come in and speak about green building with regards to incentives. I'd love to hear from some developers on, like, their take on that, or builders, because that's something that I think would be really interesting to hear more about. Let's see. So some of these are just comments, I guess. And can I, can I get a real quick, can staff, can you fill me on, what is the newest tree regulations? Like, what have we determined? What are the changes?
I'm sorry, the tree regulations?
Yeah, sorry, tree retention regulations.
Are you looking at a
Oh, sorry, page, page eight.
Oh.
Under urban design element. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I can take that, because I brought that, those amendments through Planning Commission and Council. We, I think we strengthened the regulations. We added some flexibility by changing from a requirement that just required preserving 10% of the trees, significant trees on a site, to 10% of the diameter inches. So that was to encourage retaining particularly large trees, not just smaller ones. We added some provisions to encourage retaining groves of trees, as opposed to just individual trees. Those are the, kind of the highlights that come to mind.
Okay. And specifically on that, on that, like, how did they get strengthened from what it was previously, if you could, I mean, was it much
We just had identified some areas where there were, in implementing the previous regs, where there were shortcomings, and we tried to address those. And we also significantly increased the bond required for trees that were intended to be retained, partly because we, our experience had been that oftentimes, trees that were intended to be retained were damaged or killed in the construction process, and the bond was small enough that it wasn't much of a penalty to the developer, so.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Dave. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Dave.
I think that's all I have there, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cabe?
We'll probably touch on it when we dive into the individual sections, but Gary, we spent a long time talking about TDRs, and thanks for adding the goals in the section with regards to the 2016, 2017 docket. If we don't incorporate it, if there isn't funding for an independent study, that'd be something looked at independently, correct? Or how are we moving forward? I'm just afraid that we will miss our window if we don't have something.
Yes. You know, that's a good question. Our hope is that the Canyon Park Urban Center Study will be funded by council, and we'll fold it into that because it seems to make sense since Canyon Park would be the most likely receiving area for TDRs. But if that study, for some reason, is not funded fully, we could potentially still move forward with TDR as a separate item, because the funding necessary to pick that up again and complete that would be much less.
And realistically, when do you guys anticipate Canyon Park redevelopment, as far as if we do the residential overlay? When will that process take hold? I just want to make sure that the TDR element isn't too far behind to where the process gets moving, and then we try to add something when developers are going to balk at that in the future.
That's a good question, too. And one that's not easy to answer, because we're talking about a market and a changing market. And I don't know if Bill wants to weigh in, too, but I think we anticipate that sometime within the next decade, perhaps, we would, or perhaps sooner, we would start to see a demand for residential with the zoning in place. Our hope is that, we think we can still do the Canyon Park update and include TDR in that and still be ahead of that curve. I don't know, Bill, if you want to add anything, or?
I agree with what Gary said, but I do think that around the edges of the Canyon Park area, there might be a much faster response by the market. Areas that are, are and feel separate from the business park, that are close to residential now, may respond to the addition of the RAC designation and develop within, literally within a couple of years. So we may miss that opportunity to apply TDR, but otherwise, I concur with Gary, that the appreciation in the value of land sufficient to warrant knocking down existing buildings in the business park probably won't happen for close to a decade.
Okay.
So just to summarize, I think there might be some small redevelopment happening in the very near future around the periphery of the business park, but really significant redevelopment is not likely to occur for some time.
Okay, and realistically, it looks like the direction we're moving is not a barrier to develop so much as maybe added density with a TDR program, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I think, based on the discussions, the extensive discussions we had with our consultants and with King County, we recognize that, and after hearing from, in particularly hearing from property owners in Canyon Park, I think what we realize is that perhaps there needs to be more incentive for developers to participate in that program. In other words, perhaps they're given some base residential allowance, and then TDR would provide a density bonus or floor bonus over that. So that's what we, I think we would need to look at further and do some pro forma models and examine those and see what the returns are. And I think that was the main reason, one of the main reasons for holding it off now.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Anything else on the memo? Let's move forward now to the vision statement. And that's, again, was part of the kind of introductory section that we were provided. Are there any questions or comments, improvements, anything on the vision statement? Commissioner Leach?
I just have one clarification under point five. It talks about scarce resource.
Page are you on?
Oh, sorry, VS two. Point number five, it talks about scarce resources. I mean, I assume it's talking about financial resources for the city. Is that what?
I don't believe, I mean, are we talking about financial resources there? Are we talking about natural?
Or human?
When I read it, but you guys can weigh in.
Things like trees would be an example of that, I'm assuming, and open space.
Trees, water, natural resources, but do we want to add the word "natural" there? Just to clarify that. We certainly could. We're not talking about scarce financial resources.
I'd like that. If you could possibly add that word, it'd be great.
It's fine. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
I don't think my time on the Planning Commission has started yet. When you reviewed the vision statement, and I don't think my comment really is about the vision statement specifically, but I think this is the appropriate time to bring it up. I wondered, ever since I got on the Planning Commission, if there had been any discussion or any thought put into renaming the comprehensive plan. The reason I mention that is it's called Imagine Bothell. And Imagine Bothell, to me, back in 2004, maybe made a lot more sense than it does now, because we've achieved so much as a city, and I think we have a lot more to achieve, that Imagine Bothell is still appropriate. But should we be looking at, should we be considering acknowledging somehow the things that have been achieved since we started the comprehensive plan? And I'm no branding person, so I was just thinking about, what could you name it, you know, as Imagine Bothell, possibly something like Experience Bothell, or acknowledge that Bothell is an action-oriented community of people that are getting out and doing things for the better. So Bothell in Action, or we've executed a lot of things. I was thinking we could call it Bothell Executed, but I don't think that really works that well. But I'm just wondering, in general, has it been thought about? I mean, because I think it, there's a little bit, I think frankly, a little bit of celebration in order, and maybe that could be acknowledged somehow, either in the vision statement or in the name of the plan. I'm just curious.
Well, I'm about to retire, and you're talking about denying me my legacy.
[laughing]
No, that's my, that's my name. So I have no interest in changing it. But seriously, I've worked here for, Bruce and I both worked here for 28 years. Gary's been here for 27 years, Dave a little less than that. We've seen the city change a lot, and it's pretty clear to us that it's going to continue to evolve. And the Canyon Park area is a good illustration of that. I mean, some people may say, "Well, that's done." But people who really know development see the one-story office warehouse buildings out there, and they know that they're not going to be there forever. They're going to change into something else. So not being defensive and not being overly protective of the name, I think that it's okay to continue to Imagine Bothell into the future, because it will continue to change.
Yeah, I'm wondering, and I wasn't suggesting necessarily getting rid of the idea of Imagine Bothell, but, you know, experience in Imagine Bothell, or maybe it's just something we put in to the vision statement overall that says, "Hey, look, we've come, look how far we've come, and look what we have to do, and, you know, let's keep it work," or something. I just.
Yeah, I think I understand the comment that we want to acknowledge that progress has been made. I think that's what you're saying, acknowledge and celebrate that progress. I think that potentially that could be done even in just the first page. Commissioner Cabe?
I thought we tried to do it with the addition of rooted in a deep appreciation for Bothell's rich history. I know that sounds like it's ancient and we're, you know, valuing old historical buildings, but when we initially went through this, I thought that was the intent, to capture kind of where we are today in Bothell, along with where we're going. I don't know, if it doesn't do it for you, I mean, that's okay.
Yeah, and I just wanted to throw it out there, and I'm not suggesting that we necessarily make any change. And Bill, I was more trying to compliment you and the staff by saying, what we've achieved, I think it is worth acknowledging. And I, you know, I mean, you look at, I don't know, I remember when I first moved to Bothell, and I remember coming here when I was in college, and it doesn't even seem like the same place to me, to be honest with you, for the better. So I just, you know, I think there really has been a lot positive done.
I can tell you, sorry, I can tell you this, that when we coined that term back in the early 90s, we were certainly unique in the state and maybe regionally, nationally, I don't know. But since then, other jurisdictions have appropriated that name. And there are Imagine, other towns.
Imagine Shelton.
Imagine Shelton, and even bigger jurisdictions than us have appropriated it. So we should have copyrighted, but, you know, water under the bridge.
I would second what Commissioner Cabe said, and Commissioner Clark, just on page VS one there, this adding that comment, rooted in a deep appreciation, was, in a sense, our attempt to kind of acknowledge, to have this, even though this is, I think, necessarily a forward-looking document, it's not going to be changed for another eight years. We do want to keep it focused on the future. We did add that, but, you know, we could add something like rooted in a deep appreciation for Bothell's history, as well as the progress that has occurred, or something like that. But, you know, I think there might be some kind of wordsmithing we could do in the initial page here that might accomplish what you're looking for.
All right, that's just food for thought. Thank you.
Anything else? No. Okay. Any other questions with regards to the vision statement? Seeing none. Overall, my recollection, and some of these I remember better than others, but I do remember the work that we did on the vision statement. And maybe it was because it was kind of, we were pretty early in the process, and we had a fresh level of energy. But I think we put a fair amount of work into reading, closely reading it, keeping language, as well as improving where we could. So I don't have a lot more, and you'll see that there was a considerable amount of Planning Commission input made on the vision statement. So I just have a couple of, well, excuse me. No, I don't have any. My next questions are with regards to land use element, so I think we're done with the vision statement. All right, let's move forward. Land use element. Are there any questions, comments with regards to the land use element? Commissioner Cabe?
One question, LU five, talking about vacant land and possibly larger parcels, that in the initial, I think the previous edition was five or 10-acre parcels, now we're moving it to an acre or more. In others, we have some conflicts. I guess in other sections, we're expanding on the open space requirement, trying to do everything we can to protect it. Here, we're sort of honing it back in. I realize that development's going to need to take place in these underdeveloped areas, but just wondering what you guys thought of sort of conflicting sections and how we?
Well, one of the reasons, I think, if I recall correctly, one of the reasons we recommended this change was that the number of much larger parcels, five or 10 acres, that exist in the city now versus 20 years ago is significantly less. So a lot of the parcels that are available now are smaller in size, one acres, two acres. And I think that was the whole reasoning for that.
Okay. I don't necessarily need to see a change, just wondering if you guys had any input on it, if we're?
The only thing, it's interesting you brought that up. As I went through here, I'd circled that. It obviously caught my eye as well. But I'm fine with the language as edited, so I don't have anything to change. Any other comments or questions with regards to LU? Commissioner Leach?
On LU five, down to the, near the bottom, it says, where it says 30 dwelling units per acre? Is that right? Is that, is that the designation for, like, the size of Six Oaks? Or was it bigger?
That's the next page. Next page talks about hundreds.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know that 30.
David's on the bottom of page, LU five, is that correct, David?
Yeah, LU five.
Well, I think LU six talks about 100 units per acre when building design taken. So that's the Six Oaks reference, correct? As far as the density in that area? No?
Yes, you're correct. We could, we could make that consistent.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that'd be great. That's small. Okay. And I have a couple more.
Sure.
Unless I'm, on, let's see. It was on LU seven, and you referenced it correctly later, it's just kind of a, all these things that you're having to change. I know it's hard, because you're changing one thing, one place, and it changes like three other places. Under schools, so I think it should be a college and a university. And then later on down the page, it's Cascadia Community College, it'd be Cascadia College.
Yep, thank you.
Yep. Yes, one other question, LU 12, there's, at the bottom right of the, I guess, of the spreadsheet graph, it says negative employment. Is that because with regards to, is that talking about the integration of maybe Country Village in with the Red Barn Village? I was just trying to understand better, is that because?
I think that's because, under those scenarios, if you increase, use that land to increase the residential density and redevelop Country Village, it takes away from employment numbers.
Okay.
So in that case, and under that scenario, it would be a negative employment result.
Okay, so we'd see some loss in businesses.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, that's a loss of employment capacity, not necessarily a loss of real businesses.
Okay.
Because it's looking at capacity.
Okay, thanks, Gary. On LU 36, under item number 17, it just, it's one of those things where these, our figures change. And so I think, on the first paragraph on LU 36, under item number 17, it says LU five, and I think it's supposed to be LU four.
That does change now, thank you.
And then on the paragraph below that, it says LU six, and then it's LU five.
Thank you.
I've got one quick change moving backwards, not to backtrack, but LU nine talks about, second from last paragraph on the bottom, under the RGS, Bothell is a core city. The rest of the paragraph seems to go on and talk about urban centers, and it's, I have a hard time tracking it, because it talks about Bothell being a core city, which was assigned through the RGS process. Then later, city council sought a designation of an urban center. I just, I don't know exactly where the core city fits into that discussion.
Well, I didn't write this, but I can tell you the history. Maybe this needs to be reordered a little bit. The city council nominated the Canyon Park area of Bothell as an urban center in the mid 90s. And the Petersham Regional Council endorsed that recommendation and designated it as an urban center. Over time, first Vision 2020 and then Vision 2040, an urban center had a different terminology. It became known as a regional growth center, or an RGC. And all regional growth centers were then, in Vision 2040, designated either metropolitan cities or core cities. So we were an urban center that was re-termed a regional growth center, and it is a, it's the core city kind of regional growth center. So maybe this needs to be stated more clearly, but that's the history.
Okay, that clears it up for me. Thanks, Bill.
I, let me just lend my support again to Commissioner Cabe. I do think it's easy to get a little confused on the, between core city and urban center, and maybe that we can just rework that.
We can clear that up, yeah.
A little bit more, just to have it read a little more clearly.
Yeah, when I first read through it, it made it look to me that the planning council had gone after the designation of a core city, which would mean this added population that we're trying to bring in as opposed to the urban center, so.
I think what happened there is, I pulled this language out of an earlier document that we sent to city council when we were discussing this, and probably didn't pull over all of the language, so we can certainly clarify that.
Okay. Any other?
Commissioner Leach? And just a general comment or question on LU 37. Like, I wasn't here when some of this stuff was discussed, and I want to thank the Planning Commission again for all the time they put in on it, just to clarify some stuff for myself. So when it comes to, I have a question about critical areas. Who, I know what a critical area is. I don't know who oversees the monitoring of a critical area with, say, a new development or ongoing or ongoing critical area preservation or monitoring. Like, who's in charge of that? And maybe this isn't the right time for this question, but I'm just kind of interested in it since it's...
Well, I'll give you a really quick and dirty answer, if that's okay.
That's great.
When a new development is approved and there are critical areas on site, those are typically placed into a critical areas tract, and those are recorded on the face of the plat or PUD or whatever that mechanism is. And also usually there's some enhancement or rehabilitation of those areas occurring as well. And in those cases, we also require a monitoring report done, be done over a period of anywhere from three to five or six years. But essentially, once those areas have been identified and they've been delineated in the field as part of a development application, then they are put into a separate legal tract that is recorded along with the development.
Is it the monitoring, is that our staff, or is that...
No, the monitoring is typically done by a third-party biologist, and they provide a report to us that says the new plans that were put in are doing great, or they're not doing well and need be replaced.
Could I just clarify one thing? That third-party, third-party is usually, or is most recent, often paid for by the developer.
That's correct, it is. It's a requirement that's placed upon the developer to provide that monitoring, a report to the city over that period of time.
Okay. I think that's all I have on that element.
Seeing no other questions from any of the other commissioners, I only had one very minor comment, but it was something we talked about. This is LU10. This is where we have these tables of population targets versus capacity. And I know we talked about this, but it struck me again as I was reading through this, and I saw it right in the middle there, the new red, at least red in my copy box, 2014 OFM population. And I had to really think again, OFM, I think that's Office of Financial Management?
That is, correct.
Kind of saying that's the source...
I can put a footnote to spell that out.
Would you?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. It just kind of jumped out at me again as something that would make that more readable. I think we're ready to move on from land use. So the next section will be natural environment. So, let's take a look at the NE section. Are there any comments or questions with regards to the natural environment? Commissioner Cabe?
I just had one, and it was in line with the handout that Mr. McNeil handed out before he left. But NEP6, it seems like we're, I don't like adding qualifiers if we're putting in a policy, if at all possible. I mean, I know in some cases we do, but all reasonably viable seems like it's kind of vanilla-ed out that statement to not have much impact, at least when I read through it. So I would be in favor for, you guys had all potential in quotes up above, and I think that might have been what was in there initially. But I'm okay with going back to that, which, I want to get your guys' feedback.
I'm trying to track with you, which, which, give me a page number that you...
NE8, last, last policy at the bottom there, NEP6.
Are you, are you saying you want to retain all reasonably viable or not?
No. I'd like to go back to all potential if we could, just reasonably, to me, I don't know, we can keep adding other...
Qualifier, it feels a little qualified.
Yeah.
Any comments on this?
I'd like to ask staff, obviously you guys had a reason for making that change. What, what was the background of that?
It looks like right above it, the planning commission referred the word, looked like we did that.
Okay.
Yeah, provided that, that changed language.
I, I get a little concerned with all options because I think that might be a slippery slope for staff. I mean, where do you stop in looking, I mean, reasonably viable obviously is, is left to the interpretation of whoever's evaluating the particular option, but, but I think it gives some, I guess some discretion to staff to not look at every single thing that somebody might bring up, every option somebody might bring up. And I think it would be appropriate that, that under the reasonably viable, maybe we state somewhere who that is that makes that determination. We leave a lot of, a lot of these decisions up to the, to the director, community development director. I wonder if that's a situation there where that's where the determination of, is this a reasonably viable option? I just think it, there's ramifications of saying all options that might affect a lot of things, staff time, budgets, and a lot of other things that would concern me frankly.
Well, would either one of you propose a motion that we could just quickly vote on in terms of improved language for NEP6?
If I could interject just real quickly, if you look at the language just following that section, it says all reasonably viable options when presented. So I think if it said all options when presented, it would only refer to those that were actually submitted or presented to the city. I don't think it would necessarily, at least the way I'm reading it, be incumbent upon the city to go out and have to look at every potential option that might exist.
Yeah, and that's, that's how I read it.
You okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
All right.
Commissioner Clark, if that...
So are we suggesting making, changing it back or leaving it?
I think we're proposing right now, just leave it as, as is.
Uh, yes, I'd be fine with that.
I'm, sorry, I'm suggesting putting it back because I think when presented qualifies it. I'm not stuck on this, but I, I just think adding qualifiers in general makes it...
So you're, 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 just wanted to make sure I'm capturing this, you want to go to all potential?
Yeah, all potential options. I mean, when presented is still protecting us from planning staff rooting every open space throughout the city. I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's a true concern. I mean, if it's presented, it's going to be looked at regardless, and someone's going to make the determination whether it's viable or not, so I guess I just don't see the big liability, but I'm fine either way.
I would agree with that.
So I think we're, we're going towards all potential. It is stronger. I think heads are nodding, we don't need a motion on that, so let's just change that to all potential. Any objection to that? No. Okay. Any other improvements, comments, changes on the natural environment? Commissioner Clark?
I have another, I guess, question related to Mr. McNeil's testimony and what he handed out as an exhibit. I'm just curious to know, you know, obviously what Mr. McNeil presented here is well-thought-out and has a lot of good information in it. My question for staff, I guess, is considering where we are in the process, what, what, is it, how realistic is it to try to review and potentially incorporate some of this into the natural environment element at this point?
Want me to take a tab?
Sure.
Okay, I, actually, a lot of things I think that he's identified, if we expand a little bit of time and look at it, I think a lot of the areas he's identifying for some improvement actually are in other sections of it.
Such as the shorelines?
The shoreline element, and the reason that we kind of defer to the shoreline element is because it is a brand-new element. It's vetted by the Department of Ecology, it uses best available science, best management practices and all those things. And I guess from a standpoint of which one has a better functions and values protection, I think it's the shoreline element. Now, where those two intersect, we can make some changes here. I mean, it's not a, it's not a, you know, we're, again, the purpose of this is to provide that protection for those natural features, and I don't think anybody disagrees with any of that stuff. So I think the idea is that when it, when we talk about specific things like the Sumamish River and North Creek, I think staff would say our preference would be to use the shoreline element because it covers all, both those creeks, and of course, Swamp Creek as well, plus lands within 200 feet.
Right.
But where we're covering areas that are outside that, I think it's very reasonable. And maybe there's some room here to add a few tweaks here and there to basically say, okay, yeah, well, we can do some things about, you know, impervious surfaces, maybe not necessarily, but we do have a whole bunch of other provisions underneath the natural environment that I think cover a lot of the things he's identified. Now, I haven't had a lot of time to go through it, but I'm just kind of speaking in general terms.
And I, I kind of agree with you. I wonder then, would it be, would it be too much trouble or would it be possible in the timeframe you have to quickly review this against the background of the different elements and kind of check off, yeah, it looks like we've got, that one's covered, looks like that one's covered, and if, and see if there are anything, anything in here that really truly isn't addressed by one of those. Would that be, would that be an appropriate, I mean, do you have the time in the next...
In the next few days, perhaps.
We don't want to do that tonight, but I...
Not tonight, but, but I, yeah. I guess what I'm saying is, I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that we're supposed to be wrapping this up on March 30th. We have a pretty full agenda, and I don't want to, I think this potentially adds a lot to your work schedule, so is it possible to do that, kind of that comparison of...
I think, I think it's something I can do in a fairly quick, you know, morning and a couple cups of coffee now.
Would you, would, would the commissioners be supportive of that?
Yes, yeah, we would. Again, we want to stay on our task, and we know staff's extremely busy right now, but...
We'll, we'll do that. You're probably not surprised to hear that, that we're, we're utilizing all of our resources to pull together next week's packet because it's, it's bigger than this one. But we can certainly, I think, by March 30th, have a response for you and, and some recommended additional language if, if we think it needs it.
And I think also, as we've gone through this over the last year, we've had some public comment, but not very much, really. And just doing a quick read of Mr. McNeil's document, I think it's actually concise, thoughtful. It's not like he's, I don't think he's belabored his point, so I would encourage us to be able to do that, if not next week, the following week, to have just a quick response to this particular exhibit.
We'll do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on natural environment? All right, let's move on. To the aforementioned shoreline element.
And, and if I may?
Yes.
Just a word of caution here, this is an element we really cannot change because it involves a shoreline master program amendment. We'd have to notify Ecology and go through their process. And this is a brand-new, and it's just, 2013 is when this was adopted, so it's really not one of those elements that we can really do a lot, much change to.
Yeah, it has a little bit of, it had a little bit of a different feel from the work we've done in the other elements. I could tell as I went through it.
It's following a different pattern of protection than the Growth Management Act. It's actually the Shoreline Management Act, so it's, it's got a little different flavor, it certainly does.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the shorelines element? Seeing none, let's move forward. Housing and Human Services, I believe is next. Anybody?
Just one general question on the housing packet. We had a long presentation about affordable housing, and I wasn't able to make it through the entire housing packet, but where, what's our main goal in that section as to how we do that moving forward? I was just curious where that ended up.
Well, the, I'll try to answer that without, without our housing experts from Arch being here tonight, but you'll notice that one of the major changes in the housing element is the background and needs analysis. And that sort of provides us the underlying data and analysis that we need to begin to approach meeting statewide housing, affordable housing goals. From that, the policies and actions that were developed with the help of Arch are primarily by Arch. There are sections in there that specifically address affordable housing, and they appear in different, in different goals and policies and action sections. And I'm probably not answering this as well as you would like me to, but...
I mean, it's not a couple-sentence answer, I understand. And accessory dwelling units, there's a few other items that we added in there that provide inventory for affordable housing, but I was just kind of...
And affordable housing, and you're absolutely correct. The, the other place that we address affordable housing at a, at a much more grassroots level is in the Housing Strategy Plan, which is a document that's been adopted by council to identify potential strategies based on goals and policies in the, in the housing element. And that strategy plan will be coming back to you for revision next year. That's one of the items the council initiated. So when we really get down to, to real, real methods of trying to achieve affordable housing, that's where those strategies really lie.
Commissioner Bley?
Just have one quick comment on that, and thanks, Patrick, for bringing that up with regards to that. It is interesting as we go forward, when we talk about affordable housing, I don't know if we, you know, later on can I discuss what that really means in a dollar amount? I guess it's kind of a hard thing to put a dollar amount because it kind of depends on what jurisdiction you're in. I don't know. But there's been some people who've come up and spoken to us and with regards to, and they use that term, and it, and then they start throwing around like $600,000 for a, you know, for a new build, and that's, I guess that might be, you know, affordable to, you know, depending on what your profession is, but I think for most workforce families that are doing other jobs that don't pay quite as well, that have a family, that wouldn't really kind of fly, they probably wouldn't be able to get the financial, you know, options available to purchase something like that, so.
There are, there are some appendices to the housing element that will be attached to the plan when it's adopted. And one of those, I don't recall, David, if you were here or not, I don't think you were for those discussions, but at least one of those documents, and I think there are a couple, is a primer on housing from Arch that includes exactly what you're talking about, the definition for affordable housing at different income levels. I'll be glad to provide that to you. Some of those numbers are actually inserted into the, the background and housing needs analysis in the, in the element. But David, you may not have received those appendices, so I'll make sure that you get that. And that primer is a really good, it's a really good introduction to affordable housing in Washington State and what those economic numbers are.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks, Gary.
I think the only thing that I would add is, I very much appreciate staff's work on housing and human services and the incorporation of human services into that element. That was one of the changes we made. I thought it was a real improvement. Thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
I had a quick comment about the accessory dwelling unit issues. I've read through this, and it seemed like when we were considering this, you know, changing the square foot allowed and that, and that sort of thing, that we were thinking about an accessory dwelling that would be added to an existing home or added outside of an existing home. Because there's a discussion about, you know, 40% of the, I'm kind of looking over, trying to figure out what we added and what got struck in the, in the details, but does, does this code, this new section that we're adding, also accommodate if an accessory dwelling is built at the same time as a new single-family residence, do you think? Or is it too...
It does. The, the current code, the way it's worded, I don't know if it was intended this way, but the way it's worded, it really, if you read it strictly, it only applies to adding an accessory unit to an existing, at least in terms of the size limitations. So we've, we've changed that so that it applies whether you're adding to an existing house or building a new house, or adding a detached accessory dwelling unit, so.
So was there previously a preclusion to having an ADU built at the same time as a new house? Or how did you work through that description?
No, there wasn't a preclusion, it's just the way that it was worded. It wasn't clear whether the size limitations really applied to new construction.
I see, okay, thank you.
Anything else on housing and human services? Seeing none, I think we're ready to move forward. Let's go to the next element, which is economic development. There was considerable input made from previous commissioner, Commissioner Batshuello. This was back in June of 2014 when a lot of his comments were made, as well as other planning commission comments. I had no changes from our work done then. Does anybody else? Okay, seeing none, let's move forward. Parks element. So this is now parks, recreation, and open space. That was one of the significant changes right on PR1 that we made. Are there any changes to this section that runs 50 pages long? Nope, all right. Let's go forward. Oh, I had one very minor. One of the, this is just for the city council, so one of the figures in the parks elements, mini, mini parks, figure two, at least on my exhibit that I had, or my printed copy, the legend and the footnotes were just garbled.
Yes.
So what's going on there?
Yeah, the GIS folks are trying to address that. We were kind of working on some of those things, actually even last week, and trying to come up with a way. There's a bad sector
Okay.
in there, and they're trying to get that fixed, so they will have it repaired by the time we...
I just wanted to make sure you're aware of it so that by the point it goes forward, that...
It's a strange language.
Okay, great.
It looks like the, the same with the street, street names and that kind of thing on there.
Yes.
Yeah.
One of the things that we're still working through is... One of the things that we're still working through is essentially the GIS division is working through housekeeping all of the figures in the comp plan so that all the title blocks look the same, all of the titles are correct, and so forth. There are no substantive changes, the figures are all good, it's just making them look good at this point, so we're still working through that.
Understood, thank you. Commissioner Vleet.
And I can't find it now, but I'm glad that this kind of triggered what I was thinking. There used to be a small park called, I think it was Triangle Park or something like that, is that the 527 interchange? And did that...did that get relocated, or does it exist anymore? It was referenced early on here, and I meant to write down, it was one of my things I meant to get to, but I think it was for veterans or two?
It went away with the crossroads road improvements. Oh, right, I know what you're talking about. You're talking about that very small little park at the end of Main Street?
You speak in front of asking robbers.
Right, the American flag and the POW flag, okay.
Had a little bench there.
So, okay, so it's no longer...okay, it's no longer around, okay.
My understanding is that some of those elements are going to be relocated, if they haven't already been, in Park of Bothell Landing.
That'd be great.
Great, thank you. All right, let's move forward, historic preservation element. I have no changes, we were working on that last May, made quite a few changes to it then, but I don't have any new changes now. I don't see anything, all right? Urban design. So again, we were working on this last July. Fairly extensive amount of changes, this was where we had these two, page UD8 was where those two exhibits that you've mentioned, Gary, in your presentation are contained.
That was one example, there are several pages that have the exhibits incorporated into the eight and a half by 11 format.
I will once again express my support for doing that as much as possible throughout the comprehensive plan, because I think it just really makes it a lot more readable.
Are we ready to move forward from urban design? All right, annexation element. We were working on that in March of 2014. There was quite an extensive amount of staff proposals, as well as commission, planning commission response. Was that 420...you have February 19th, 2014, I'm just looking at A and 2. That was...were we working on at that time? It's...
Yeah, it was one of your...one of the first pieces of the plan that you reviewed.
All right, thank you. I don't have any additional changes, none, okay. Utilities element. We worked on that in April of 2014. Again, I do recall a considerable amount of discussions, particularly around telecom and wireless, where we clarified kind of the world we're in now and trying to have a little more, let's say, language that won't become obsolete in a year. Hopefully, we accomplish that. Are there any comments or questions on the utilities element? Let's move forward. Transportation element. It's very large, there's been a significant amount of work done on this. And as Gary mentioned in his presentation, there's going to be, or maybe it was one of the other staff, that there will be transportation integration into the subarea plans as well. I think the feedback in general that the planning commission gave on the transportation element was that at least what initially came to us was a little bit, in a little different feel and format than some of the others, than kind of what was consistent. I think we got more consistent, but let's continue to try to work on that. Well, we're not going to get a chance to do it after this for a long time, but I think we moved the ball forward in terms of having it be more consistent, let's just put it that way, than what we initially saw. And there's always, I think, with every one of these elements, the temptation to provide so much detail that it's no...that it's just unreadable, and it's just too much. And I think transportation came close to that, where it's like we just have, there's so much in there that it's, you know, to the person who's just coming to it for the first time, it's just, it doesn't kind of meet its idea of the kind of the vision for the city rather than so many details. And I felt like we kind of got there a little bit, but I think we improved it. I had one question on transportation that was all, but I'll let others ask. It had to do with level of service, so I noticed as I was moving through this section that that level of service, both where we're at today, as well as what we aspire to in level of service is...it took me a while to kind of go back and find out really what Bothell meant by level of service. Now, it is on page TR14, and if you go there, we have level of service A through F, and there's signalized control delay per vehicle, unsignalized delay per vehicle. And I recognize that other cities have adopted level of service E, and it sounds like that's what Bothell has adopted as its...is that our goal for our corridors? And that perhaps, I just, I'm curious, is this what cities...I think we could do better, but what's the thinking behind level of service E? Because signalized control delay per vehicle, and I think this is that peak hours was 55 to 80 seconds. Is that really the right goal for Bothell?
Yeah, it's a...E is never...it's not a good grade to get in school. And it's not a great LOS to have here. But rather than an admission of failure, I would characterize it as a recognition that you can't build your way out of congestion. And history has proved that, you can widen roads, you can install signals, but the traffic fills them up again. So it's, as in anything in planning, it's a matter of balancing competing objectives. So the LOS E says that we're going to strive to maintain a balance of the ability of motor vehicles to move, but also provide for some space in the right of way for bicyclists and pedestrians, meanwhile encouraging transit and other alternative modes of transportation. But, and as you correctly pointed out, the adoption of LOS E is not unique to Bothell. Most jurisdictions have adopted LOS E. Some jurisdictions have even gone so far as to recognize that there are corridors in their jurisdictions that are at LOS F, and they have recognized that there's some corridors you just can't do any more to, without having catastrophic impacts on folks who currently live along those streets or, you know, acquiring so much property as to make an area unlivable.
Thank you for that further explanation, it's what I thought, but it's good to have that clarified, thank you. I had one other question with regards to transportation element before we leave it, and it's just, if we could just take figure TR3A, where this, what this figure does is identify kind of our corridor locations in our city with then, in level of service hours with, at the 2014 peak hour. There were, maybe before I asked specifically, what's involved with changing or adding additional streets and areas inside of Bothell to have it become a corridor? What's involved with that? And then you can imagine I have a couple of suggestions.
It's a really good question, and I'm not qualified to answer, I don't know if Gary is, but it's an excellent question, and I think, unless Gary can answer this, I would really like to get you an answer back in writing from Steve Morcowell, that would be the...he's the best person to provide that answer.
And I probably should have brought this up while we were going through transportation, so I recognize, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and...
No, I agree with Bill. Steve and I, Steve actually explained this to me, but I don't remember his answer sufficiently well to repeat it back to you without probably really messing it up.
Okay.
So I agree with Bill, I think I would probably like to ask Steve to provide a written response back to you.
And I don't think on this kind of, we're doing a complete review of the whole plan, this isn't the time to start debating which one should be a corridor or not, but it was just, it did jump out at me as to, it's a pretty important designation, when a street or arterial gets named as a corridor, then it gets a lot of additional attention, ultimately dollars, either in terms of additional lanes, signals, et cetera. And I, you know, I think I'm going to even hold off on my suggested streets, I don't think that's necessary for this evening, but I have a feeling it'll come up when the city council reviews this, so maybe it's just more a matter of being prepared for that, so. Anything else on transportation? Commissioner Cave.
Just one quick question. Under parking, TR-19, talks about a downtown parking plan in 2011. I may have missed it in our packet, or does it live in the downtown subarea, the parking plan in general for a city? And follow-up question, do you think we're going to be moving towards paid parking or some other parking mitigation? I know it's an unpopular question, but I'm just curious.
The downtown plan does identify that as a future possibility, but one that, at the time it was written, wasn't seen as imminent, or even that we're very close to that. We, their, staff is in the process of putting out a request for qualifications for a parking study to expand on what has been done in the past. During the downtown plan effort, we did a parking, well, I guess it was a parking study and implementation of adding spaces where we could in the downtown core. But this would be a broader study that would look at everything from our parking management, our potential parking management plans, to our development regulations and whether we're achieving the goals that we want to for that.
Thanks, yeah, I'd be supportive of additional studies, just because I think, as all the new developments come online, we could be facing some obstacles or some hurdles.
Thank you. Commissioner Vleet.
And I might have missed it, kind of perusing through this, trying to get through the whole packet, because it is sizable. And it's something I, I think I brought up earlier, I'm not sure, but did we have, do you have anything in the transportation? I do apologize if maybe I overlooked it, with regards to requirements, and maybe it's a municipal code question, but requirements for like new parking garages, say like the one under City Hall, will it be coming with electric charging stations for the newer cars that are coming out? And where will those be available in the Bothell area?
Our existing regulations do have provisions for electric parking stations. I don't believe we have specific requirements at this time that they be installed in new developments. I don't believe so. But they certainly provide for the provision of electric parking stations and provide for the space required and so forth, and technical specifications.
So it's, but it's not a requirement to necessarily have those spaces or to provide any electrical charging mechanism for cars? It just seems like that's kind of the future of transportation, so...
Yeah, we did some fairly extensive code amendments regarding electric vehicle stations in particular about three or four years ago, in fact, I processed them. But I'm sorry, I just don't recall the details in them right now off the top of my head. I can't recall whether we require those spaces in certain developments or whether we encourage them, I think we encourage them and provide...
I remember when we worked on that, that there was a requirement that if you're, especially if you had an interstate going through your city, that within a certain distance from the interstate, you needed to, there was an actual requirement for charging stations.
Yeah, I don't recall this specifically.
So that, I believe, is, I don't know where it is, but I believe that's in our plan. I can tell you personally, beyond that, I'm more for, rather than a kind of a proactive policy from Bothell to have more of the market kind of take us there, as there is more demand for electric car chargers, rather than more code in the city to do that. But that's just me personally. Any other comments? Commissioner Cave.
I'd just like to look at other jurisdictions. I mean, I work a lot downtown Seattle, and I know a lot of the new developments have those included, so I don't know if it's a code issue or if it's the market driving it, but if the market never gets us there, I just, I hope we get it covered one way or another, so I think it's a good point he brought up.
Commissioner Vleet. So I think, are we about done with transportation? All right, capital facilities. And we had both the copy that was provided to us in our mailboxes, as well as your updated emailed copy to us, Gary?
Correct.
So are there any comments or questions with regards to capital facilities? Seeing none, you have any now?
You have a couple of questions. On CF9, there's a, on page CF9, there's a reference to, I was just, I was trying to wrap my head around the numbers there, it talks about inspections and data collection, and it was somehow changed, and the numbers didn't quite add up for me, so with regard...
Where are you at?
Oh, so right in the middle of the page.
Oh, inspections, data collection?
Yeah. I just was trying to understand that better.
Oh, that information was provided by the fire department, I'll get back to you on that, as to what that means.
Okay.
Anything else?
Actually, I might have one more. With regards to, let's see, I had a reference to CF18. Oh, yeah, actually, this was something I did want to touch base on. So, you know, parks and open spaces are definitely a big, big thing to me, and I think to the citizens of Bothell, and I really do hope that the city gets a chance to do another levy sometime soon, to give the citizens another chance to vote for it, because it is something we really need. The available land for good parks is kind of diminishing. I mean, you don't get more land down the road, you get less. And the most desirable, you know, soccer fields, softball fields, crossfields, or even just open spaces that aren't critical area ravines that have steep drop-offs are going to go away pretty quickly if the city doesn't take action on it. And I know the funds are tight, and we have to be able to find some financial possibilities to make that happen. But I was looking at the level of services on page CF18, I believe it is, and it does look, it does look like we're failing pretty bad as far as the city with regards to level of service when it comes to park and open space. And it looks like even just back in, I think it was 2004, or actually, maybe it was, you know, before that, it used to be that the level of service was like eight acres for every thousand residents, and we dropped that, and we still are not even close to attaining it. So I don't, it's kind of an urgent matter for me, because Bothell is a very desirable place to build, to live. And so I was wondering if staff has any idea, I know there's an action plan with regards to, on the next page about CF19, on things that are going to be done going forward. Is it, do we have the money available to be able to pursue those? On CF19 with regards to the Open State acquisition and those six line item?
I mean, those would be in the capital facilities plan.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if, we really don't reference that here in this document, but I mean, that's part of the capital, six years, it's a separate document, there's a whole section in there on parks, some of it shows... Some of it, it shows what we are aspiring to in terms of parks, parks planning, what we have in the way of secured funding, as well as unsecured funding. So I might refer you to that. I don't know if staff would have anything additional to add there.
No, that's a good response.
Yeah, and just in closing on that, I look at those six comments right there with regards to open space acquisition and, and the park at, sorry, the park...
What page are you on?
Oh, sorry, CF19, Park at Bothell Landing Expansion. I mean, I'm all for that. It looks like we have a lot of, and I know we have a lot to get done there. We have, it looks like we have a lot wrapped up in that. While we're trying to achieve that, I guess I feel like a lot of the good open spaces will, will kind of disappear with just the natural pace of development. So I don't know if there's any way of restructuring any of that, but maybe I can bring that up another time. I just want to make that comment.
The only thing I would add to that in terms of, I mean, Commissioner Vleat brings up a valid point, and that is that, as I read it as well, I saw that we're, we have this aspirational goal for park space. And how many acres per thousand population was it, I believe, was it one, is it 1.5?
Four.
4.5. And Commissioner Vleat rightly points that.
2.5 acres we're at.
Let's get this right. What, what page are we looking at?
CF18, bottom of the page.
So my only thing that I, that I would add to that is that I agree that, yeah, we are falling short in terms of our goal on parks. But to get, the one question I would have for you is, I reviewed our map of the park space that we have in our city. It's disproportionately spread out, and it's Snohomish County that's underserved in the way of park space. And so I think we need to get underneath that and not just aspire to meet some numeric goal, which is great, but I think we need to look at the entirety of our city, and I think especially as we think about other very hot initiatives in front of the city council right now, and spending huge amounts of capital funds. Let's, let's not only think about attaining a numeric goal, but let's meet the right goal for our city, for all of our citizens. And my own, my own take on it, just looking at the map, was we need to really focus on Snohomish County. Do you have any comments on that?
That's a good, it's an astute observation, and it's, it's one that's not lost on staff. In fact, the Parks and Public Spaces Bond Issue went to the voters, recognized that, and provided for acquisition of land for a major park in Snohomish County. It didn't pass, obviously, so that, so that, it didn't come to fruition. But, but we're aware that the Snohomish County part of the city is underserved. That's a, it's a fairly new part of the city, having only been in Bothell since 1992. And the city has actually taken great strides to, to provide parks to that area. Since the annexation, we've developed Stipek Park, Cedar Grove Park, and Centennial Park. But even with all those things, compared to the King County part, it's underserved. So it's a, it's a continuing challenge for us, but it's, but it's very important that the, that the folks living north of the county border feel like they're part of Bothell. That's important for, for many reasons. It's, but it's a, it's a continuing effort, to which the city is, is committed. And as, as David said, it's a shame that that, that didn't pass, but it's not as if we'll never try again, because those, there are continuing and increasing needs for active parkland up in the, in the Snohomish County part of the city.
Would we want to add a goal to our parks element about Snohomish County? Would that be worth calling out? And if so, how difficult would that be?
It's a good question. I'll tell you what, let, let Bruce review that language, and he can come, get back to you in, in a couple of weeks, and...
I have a feeling that that would resonate with the city council.
Yeah.
That if we did that, it, and it could lend, it could speed, so that as we look, as the city council looks at the issues that are in front of it right now with regards to, again, how to allocate its funds, I'm just, you know, again, I'm not trying to make work for you folks, and I know we reviewed the parks element a long time ago, but let's...
No, and the only reason I'm hesitating is that I have this feeling that that, that sort of policy statement exists somewhere.
It may be there, yeah.
So that's what I, I'd like Bruce to take a look at it and see if it's already covered.
All right. Thank you.
Along with that, I mean, if Steve made an observation, which I think is correct, that there seems to be a lesser amount of parks, do you guys have it broken down between Snohomish County and King County by how many acres per, per thousand people are in Snohomish County versus King County, that we can actually get real factual data?
I think, my guess is that that was done as part of the preparation for the park and public spaces bond.
Okay.
But we'll find out.
It, all the information might not be there, but I think ProSAP has quite, I mean, they prioritize the needs. A lot of the work may be done, but the park element with, with the ProSAP packet kind of provides some direction, so...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Steve and I just went, sorry, I'm not going to labor it too much, and I'll be real short. And I guess that was getting to my point, too, about the amount of money that's tied up in the redevelopment of the Park at Bothell Landing, which of course we all want, but I guess I would prefer to see some of those funds, and I'll bring that up again later, to just buy some open space and not necessarily have to develop it right away. So don't get caught up in all the infrastructure costs, roads, electricity, you know, just to acquire some spaces, so we do, you know, 10 years down the road, we do have good places for, for parks to be developed.
Any other comments on the capital facilities element?
I had one, and it struck me, and as we, as I went through it, and we hit all the different facilities that the city owns, City Hall, Public Works, and then there was quite, starting on CF8, quite a, quite a lengthy discussion with regards to fire and EMS, and then police facilities, which I think it's totally appropriate to have, this is obviously the place for those facilities to take place. However, I did notice that what we have in the language there went beyond just the facilities, and it went into our staff, it went into the levels of service. And it struck me that we didn't have a public safety element in our plan. I recognize that this is the planning department, and that we're mainly concerned with land use and those issues. So I guess my question is, given that, the last I knew, public safety took about 70% of the city's budget, I hope there's a strategic plan somewhere for public safety. If it's not in this document that it exists, and that, again, what the city aspires to for public safety is being addressed, whether or not the Planning Commission addresses it, or there's another way that it gets in front of the city council. Do you know if, if that does exist? Yes, well, I do know each department has its own plan that, that address, addresses workload. So it addresses the human part, rather than the capital facilities part. As you may recall, way back in the very beginning of this effort, we maybe naively announced our intention to try to trim the comprehensive plan to focus just on the GMA requirements. I don't know that we did a very good job of that, but because of, because the major updates are eight years apart, and because we, we found that, that the comp plan, if you, if you try to do too much, it very quickly gets out of date.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we tried not to stray too far beyond the GMA requirements. So, so getting into, into staffing sort of issues is just really beyond the scope of this, and, and very, in very short order would be no longer relevant.
Fair enough. I might suggest we even trim a little further then, and just go ahead and, because I found actually the, the information in our capital facilities plan about staff to be kind of distracting, because then I began to think about staffing issues. And we're really talking about the, you know, I think it was totally appropriate to have our fire station facilities, our police station facilities, this is, that's what we're putting together, what the city's capital facilities are. But like, for example, on CF9, we have a whole page there on full-time equivalent staff, call volumes, data collection, inspections, hydrant maintenance. I mean, I don't know, to me, it's, it's a far reach from capital facilities. Any thoughts on that, as to whether we, that really was valuable to any of you, to have that included? And I'd either like us to do, really do a great job of providing a strategic plan for public safety for our city, or just, let's just not have it in here. Just a thought. Nobody's, everybody's looking at me like, what are you talking about?
No, I can, I can track with you. I mean, I think to Bill's point, this stuff changes so quickly, that diving into this level of depth within the plan, it doesn't really add much, because tomorrow, the needs are different, the, the response time's going to be different.
So are you agreeing with me that maybe taking some of this out, that's not really pertaining to the facilities supporting public safety, actually would help it read better?
Let me think about that one, though. I think it does need to exist somewhere in the plan, though. I, to your first point, I think it almost deserves its own section. I know we're late in the game, I'm not suggesting changing everything right now, but...
Well, that was initially what I was suggesting, was that maybe we should have a public safety element in the plan, but if we're not going to go there, then it's, let's just not go there. But...
The, the only, I hear you. I would say that the, the only reason for including service-related data in the capital facilities element with respect to fire is that that drives some of the capital issues. Location of fire stations, for example. And a police station, you usually only need one police station in a city, maybe a satellite or two. They can be located anywhere, because the, because the police cars are driving throughout the community all the time. But when it comes to fire and emergency medical service, the, they respond from the station. So the location of those stations is, is really crucial. So if I had provided all this information about service and staffing and all that, let me get, let me get with the fire chief and see if, if we can pair that without, without getting the capital facilities part of that analysis.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. Don't mean to give you more work here, but it just struck me as I went through it, that it just was a bit of a anomaly, and we either needed to address it more thoroughly, or change how we did it. Any other comments or questions on capital facilities? I believe that's it. And we're, I don't think we have any more material. We have a report from staff, but I guess, unless there's any other questions, I mean, my comments are, other than the very insightful improvements that we've all made this evening, I think the Planning Commission is ready to let go of this part of the periodic plan, and maybe advise us as to where, where this part of it goes from here.
Sure, we will, we will attempt to make all of the revisions that you've identified tonight as quickly as we can. I think when we, I'm trying to look at logistics here, but, but when we bring back your draft findings on the 25th, we will, we will, I think it's our intent to have a complete document for you. Well, we'll see how that goes, but that's our intent, so I think I mentioned that if absolutely necessary, we could, we could meet once more, perhaps the first week of April.
Yep.
So we'll, let's see how it goes over the next week or two, and if we need to utilize that date, we probably can to bring you back a full document. But if we can wrap up on the 25th, that would be fantastic.
Great. So I guess I would just like, did you have any?
Well, before we made a motion, I just want to, I personally want to thank staff for all being here tonight, and all the, all the documentation you guys prepared. It's pretty awesome how you guys keep it all together and keep us on track, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me just add, appreciate all of you being here. We tried to kind of, again, be willing to dive into the weeds if necessary, but also keep our pace going. We're under two hours. So anyway, thanks. So I think we've done our overall review of this part of the plan. If you can, if you can incorporate our improvements and changes, and have it for that kind of final review, I think we're ready to go.
Sure, I think there are some, some fairly straightforward revisions, and there are other areas where we need to come back to you with, with either explanations, or comments, or, or suggested changes, so we can, we can certainly tackle those.
Okay.
You know, thinking out loud, Gary, I wonder if, rather than providing essentially the same document, just with a few pages changed on the 25th...
Provide the changes?
Yeah, just provide the changes. Pages with changes.
I think that'd be fine.
That would be fabulous.
Yes. Please, that would be fine. So at this point, I remember you had a fairly simple motion, and there it is up on the screen. Really, we just need to continue, is it to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Is that, all right, on the periodic plan?
It's anticipated that you may receive a desire for testimony on, on next week, so we would recommend keeping it open for the time being.
So if we could articulate a motion, but we're going to continue it as a public hearing?
Continue the public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update to March 18th, 2015. Motion to...
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So I think the only other item on our agenda is a report from staff.
Thanks, I'll be very brief on this. I provided you a memo and a matrix that simply shows you what action council took on the 2015 docket of plan and code amendments. If you have any questions about any of those items, I'd be glad to try and, and answer them. But it was really just to give you a, a record of what they did, and you, you can look at that and see what will be coming to you over the next year and a half.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, I had a chance to go to that meeting with Gary. I don't think we need to go over it tonight. We'll take a look at it. It's good to know we'll be gainfully employed in the second half of this year.
We will, indeed.
I have one question about that. Is this the docket, then? I mean, there's, not, won't be anything else added to the 2015 docket, or is there still a possibility that...
Well, we've learned, we've learned to never say never.
Yeah.
This is the docket. Occasionally, items do come up that, that gain council's attention, and they can add items during mid-docket.
Okay.
Well, the only thing I would add to that, Commissioner Clark, is that this is, this is really kind of council-initiated items for us to work on.
Correct.
We have some items that we're going to be working on that we've initiated for ourselves. We thought Wayne Golf Course was going to be one of them, maybe it is, maybe it's not. We're also very interested in Nike Hill, and working with staff on, you know, a rework of that.
Correct.
And there are some others, so we've given ourselves some work in addition to this.
And you also noticed that, that there are, there's a section on there that talks about outstanding items from previous dockets that we still need to fit into the work program. So all of those collectively sort of form your work program.
Yep, great. Are there any other reports from members, comments?
Just a quick question, following up on the schedule, Gary, you talked about April might be a spring break for Planning Commission, or at least part of it. Are we, do we have any meetings planned in April? Just want to...
No, we don't at this time. In fact, you may be getting a spring break for April, May, and possibly June.
Whoa!
Because we, I mean, all of our resources essentially, I think, are going to be spent trying to get the, the plan through council.
So let me just suggest, and I'll, I'll put myself up, but I really would open it up to the other planning commissioners as well. If in your review with the city council, if it would be helpful to have one or more of us come along with you...
It would, that's a great comment, thank you.
We'd be very happy to do that.
Yes, thank you. I, I think, one of the reasons I put the dates up there for you, and I can, I can send you an email if you'd like with those dates on again, but one of the reasons I put those dates on was so that you could think about them, and we certainly like to have one or more of you present at those meetings.
So you have a commitment for me to be there? I will be there, and if, but really, I would open this up to everybody on the Planning Commission, that if you can make that.
Thanks, Steve.
I think that would be great.
We would just be there as a member of the audience and called upon if, if there were questions?
Correct, and council does sometimes like to hear the Planning Commission's perspective on why you made the recommendation you made, so it's very useful to have you there.
Great, sounds good. Is there a motion, anything else in terms of reports from members? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
We are adjourned.